Good morning. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We've got two, item number four and five we will delete. And there's an addition that we're going to add.
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustments and maybe just wanted to comment on four and five. The CARES Act committee will be bringing that back for further discussion before we bring it to this board.
Okay. Got a motion by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Grant to approve the agenda as amended. Roll call.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye. Okay, next thing. Citizens to be heard, I don't think we had anybody on the line or that called in. Then we've got the approval of the minutes on October the 13th. We'll approve them. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the minutes on October the 13th.
Second.
And a second. Motion by Jim, second by Jenny to approve the minutes on October 13th. Any discussion on that? All right, roll call.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we're going on to the bills and vouchers. I don't know if we got anything.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay. Okay, the motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the bills and vouchers. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Gross?
Aye.
And with that, we'll go up to our weekly COVID-19 update. Kathy, you still on the line there?
Yes, I am still here. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Please let me know if you cannot hear me. And I apologize for not being able to be there in person, so maybe I'm sparing you one week, Mr. Chair, from not having to see me, but you still have to hear me.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
So, I believe you all received the handouts on the data, the Minnesota case information. So, as of October 26th, we have 2,328 confirmed cases, so those were 31 newly reported cases. We still have 43 deaths. And then we have our 14-day case rate per 10,000 people of 59.08. And that is a number that we are using as we meet with our K-12 superintendent. Now, I just want to state that number is, there's some confusion out there in the public specifically, that that is a be-all, end-all rate for schools to determine what their learning model should be. And it is not just the one rate that determines that. There are a number of factors that the K-12 superintendents are taking into account along with that rate. So, they're really looking at all of their individual school districts, their numbers of positive and quarantine kids, the number of positive and quarantine staff. They're looking at their, you know, keeping their environment safe in their schools, they're doing their social distancing, cleaning and disinfecting. They're looking at a large number of factors. So, just for everyone to know, that is a specific number, but it is not the defining or the only thing that is determining that model. I also wanted to note some of the Cass County numbers. You see there, their 14-day case rate is higher, it's 78.73 for their collection date through the 12th of October. And then they also have another collection date, the 12th through the 25th, and that's 124.51. So, Cass County is still significantly impacted by this COVID. Their case numbers are 8,794. And I apologize, you don't have that on your form, so I'm just repeating that. The case number, 8,794 currently. They have 84 deaths in Cass County. And they are now working with 1,158 active cases. So, that's just a kind of a informational piece, since we are, you know, we operate as one metro area, it's good to know those Cass County, yeah, Cass County numbers. Our Minnesota positive cases are over 135,000. The deaths are 2,353. And the positivity rate for Minnesota is 5.2%. And that's in comparison to the North Dakota positivity rate of 8.28%. So, as you can see by also the trend numbers, as we have a grid that shows our number of cases, isolation deaths, and active cases, and we have that weekly, you can see that there's a little discrepancy with the positive cases we have listed as a one-time versus our trend data. Our last trend date was October 22nd. So, right now, we're dealing with around 391 active cases. And the numbers of positive cases, as we've talked about previously, throughout September and October have really been on an incline. So, we are monitoring those as we see more active cases. Now, it does, it is part of our mitigation strategy to just continue to increase our testing. And as you all know, we have the semi-permanent saliva testing site in Morehead. We were one of the 10 sites that they had chosen to set up this saliva testing. And so far to date, we've served 3,101 people at that testing site. I don't have all the data. They are trying to compile all of that information for me. But what I do know is on October 25th and 26th, those two dates, we've served a total of 516 Minnesota residents and 503 North Dakota residents. We talked about how they did open the saliva testing initially to only Minnesota residents. But as we worked with the Governor's Office, both in Minnesota and North Dakota, because of the number of tests that North Dakota provided for Minnesota residents, well over 12,000, when we didn't have testing availability on the Clay County side, we were able to work out an ability to have North Dakota residents tested at this site in reciprocation and working in one metro area. We know how many people work and go to school and really cross over that border. So, this was an important thing to have happen, and we appreciate the Governor's work on making this happen so this saliva testing can be available. The positivity rate so far through that saliva testing is 15.4%. And next week, as they can get more data to me, we're asking for, you know, regular information on that testing site. So, I will have more to share with you the following week. So, we are looking at that expansion, which is helpful, because we see our cases rising across, you know, across our Upper Midwest. And really what we're seeing is there are so many asymptomatic people, and we need to get those individuals tested. As you may well know, the medical facilities are not able to keep up with all the testing. They're really doing symptomatic cases and, of course, others with hospitalizations, et cetera. But they just are not able to test everyone that would like to test. So, this saliva testing is very helpful in that regard. Because the cases are spreading so rapidly, we really need to pick up those, what they call the silent spreaders, those that don't, do not know they have the virus, they are not ill, and they're able to really spread this infection. So, we're hoping with this saliva testing, it just is another way to be able to catch some of those people. We're really looking at a long, dark winter as projected, and if we don't continue to really provide mitigation strategies, and we're really concerned about hospital being overwhelmed as we wait for our vaccine. So, the message is clear, and it's still the same, but it bears repeating that we really need to be conscientious of large gatherings. We're seeing across the state of Minnesota that there's been large outbreaks associated with weddings and large gatherings. We also saw breakouts of infections when we had the opening of our colleges, campuses, individuals socializing in large groups outside of the classroom. And we're still seeing that socialization happen. So, we really want to let people know, it's just those large gatherings, people not wearing masks at every opportunity, even for the smaller gatherings. So, the next 12 weeks are really critical. It's important, as we watch North Dakota being one of the highest states in the Midwest that has, is having really huge outbreaks and really needing a lot of mitigation, we really also know that Minnesota is not on the woods. Our numbers in our daily increases, on Friday and Saturday, we were over 82,900 cases on Friday, that was a daily case increase, and then at 83,851 on Saturday. Our largest increase was back in July, our highest daily increase, and that was 74,800. So, we're really seeing that increase, so we're really, really needing to push the need to continue our mitigation strategies. October 26th was our 19th consecutive day in Minnesota with over 1,000 daily cases. So, what we need to do is continue to follow the guidance. We really need to keep on top of that community transmission. We initially saw the outbreaks in our long-term care facilities when the pandemic was early on. Now, we're seeing the outbreaks in the social settings, and we're seeing the asymptomatic spreaders. So, this testing will help us catch those people that are not yet symptomatic but are positive and are able to spread this virus. So, we're needing to really watch that. We're noting in Minnesota, what the data is showing is one case can really infect three others very easily. So, wearing the mask, social distancing, avoiding the crowds, stay home when you're sick, get tested when you can, that's really an effort we're really pushing on everyone. We really want people to be vigilant. And so, that's, it's really important. I know there's a lot of skepticism out there about this mask, do the mask really help, does the social distancing really help? It's not an exact science. It won't stop absolutely every incident, but it will really mitigate the large spread. So, we really need to be careful about that. We have super spreaders as well. I know there was one situation in the state where a super spreader spread it to 40 people. So, we have even situations that we can note in that regard. So, our schools are doing everything they should be doing. We're really meeting with the schools on a regular basis and staying up to date with what's happening in their schools, providing, we're able to talk through scenarios, answer questions. The schools, the K-12 schools are learning from each other. Higher Ed is also working with us. We're talking through scenarios, we're sharing all the data, and they're doing what they can as well to continue to keep their students safe and their staff safe, safe, safe. So, a really long-term solution at this point until we get a vaccine is really the personal behaviors with masks, social distancing, limiting, of course, the indoor gatherings. And as we look at upcoming new holidays, we really are concerned, of course, because it will be indoor gatherings. And so, the recommendation is that we limit gatherings to 10 people or less. There's nothing magical about that 10 number, but it's just a number to think about, how many states that can you really gather in your household and, or those even, maybe you have people in your family but are outside of your household. And you really need to be conscientious about the safety of that. And any sort of travel with family members coming from other areas is a pretty significant risk. So, we want people to be very conscientious. We know what it means to get together for holidays, but this is a very critical time for us, and we just have to be so conscientious of being extra, extra careful about that. The recommendation is still, of course, you're gathering in your household. But we want people to think long and hard about who they may include in their households for any holiday gathering. So, that's just a very important message. I know it's a hard message, but it's really critical. And I want us to keep in mind, again, the next six to 12 weeks are of utmost importance as they work on getting the vaccine. We don't know exactly the timeframe. We know the first initial doses are going to be a small number of doses, will not hit the major number of population. But we really, we need to be mindful with what we can do now to continue our mitigation of this really very contagious infectious virus. I want to note also that we do have our hotel open that we previously used for isolation and quarantine. We have a need in our community. We have someone on my team that is working directly with that hotel, with ensuring the security and all of the essential duties that we need to manage that hotel with the numbers we have. We certainly have, we have opened up just this last weekend, we have about 13 that are utilizing our hotels so far. We do have a couple of arrangements. Again, we're working with our Red River Valley Task Force. We have a couple of arrangements because we know that the Fargo side also will have a means to have a location for those that cannot safely isolate and quarantine, particularly the homeless population and those in other situations. So, we have an arrangement where we can work with some other organizations in our community, and they will be able to fund for their individuals that need to use our hotel. And we have all those details in play. We're managing that well. And so, that is one of our all-star mitigation strategies, because if you have some people out there, again, that are not isolated, not quarantined, the spread to the regular population and everyone is pretty great. So, this is another means where we can keep those people safely, keep them away from others, and mitigate that virus. I went through a lot of information in a pretty quick hurry, and I apologize, I didn't stop to ask if there was any questions. So, I could do that at this time if anyone has any specific questions for me on any of the information I provided.
Well, thank you for the brief report.
You're so welcome, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so the phone doesn't really make any difference.
No. I did have a question on these cities in North Dakota that are coming with the mask mandates. How does that compare to what Minnesota has in process right now?
You know, Minnesota has had that mask mandate for quite some time. The governor had put that in place. So, that was a mask mandate across the state. So, of course, what we're seeing in North Dakota is not that. North Dakota is one of maybe 17 states that do not have a statewide mask mandate. So, as we can see locally, what's happening across the state is they're having to make some local decisions to implement a mask mandate. They're also doing some media messaging about masks, mask up North Dakota. So, they're really making some efforts locally since it just hasn't, there hasn't been a mandate at the state level. I know that Dr. Burst from the White House did visit Bismarck, I believe it was yesterday, and she was, she's going around to multiple places across the United States and just talking about, well, she's talking about a number of things, but the masking is one of the things that she really felt was a need to really talk about. And she had expressed concern in her public release yesterday that she felt like there was a number of situations that they noticed happening in the Bismarck area where the masking was just not, there was a lot of gaps in the masking. So, she really expressed that there is so much work that needs to be done to continue that masking message. Now, Minnesota has done a good job, and we've had the mask mandate. We still have some gaps that we need to address on occasion, but the mandate is there. So, Minnesota's not in the same boat as some of those other states that don't have that mandate.
Do we have a penalty then for not wearing a mask?
No, we really don't, but we do follow up. So, if there's some hotspots or some gaps that we are alerted to, we do follow up with those. There's a follow-up with any restaurant or bars that we license, if we are hearing of cases. My food pool and lodging inspectors are very quick and diligent about following up on those. And then if we hear about others, we are doing the follow-up as well.
Okay, if we could, just a minute.
I would just point out, Chairman Gross, there is a penalty under the mandate from the governor. It's $100 fine, petty misdemeanor for persons, it could be enforced against them. It's a misdemeanor against businesses if they didn't enforce the actual mandate. We haven't really looked to put that onto people, but it is available. And that's probably one of the biggest differences between the Minnesota one versus North Dakota, where they're doing local, as far as I know. As far as I know, either local one or the farther one doesn't have any kind of penalty. It's an encouragement thing to make sure people are doing it and then telling businesses we need to have this done. But as far as I know, they don't have a penalty. We do actually have a penalty on it. We haven't seen that come through. We haven't had any tickets against people yet up to this point, but it is available.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Brian. I guess my point was that we, we at Public Health are not, you know, there's not a penalty through our licensing entities, but yes, there is one if we need to enforce that. We haven't had the need at this point in Clay County.
Yeah, it was just a little bit shorter explanation. Okay. Anybody else with a question?
Not a question, but as we move forward, whatever that looks like, I know that, Kathy, I really appreciate you adding the North Dakota piece so that we, since we are considering ourselves such a metro, to see what's happening across the river and just get us more of a cumulative understanding of cases and case positivity rates. My kids have been going to school, you know, hybrid, and so the schools send out probably the same information you cover with the superintendents, but what the 14-day case rates are, and then they take that under advisement. But another piece that they've been following are the student positivity rates and the teacher positivity rates and how those change weekly, so that, as you have said before, it's not necessarily that they're getting it at school, they're getting it in these social gatherings. And my question maybe for you is as you and the PIC Committee and administration move forward in what customer service looks like at the courthouse, I think it would be important to just follow what staff positivity rates are, where those, where those contract tracers are determining where they get that. I know we've taken the safety of our employees very seriously. And from the outside, from what I've heard, is that staff that may have been getting positive rates aren't necessarily getting it at work, they're getting it outside of work. But I think that's a piece of data that would be very helpful moving forward to continue to monitor.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Mojo. We certainly do communicate on a regular basis, and I know Darren in HR and Steve are, we're all communicating about what is happening in Clay County. I'm also communicating with Minnesota Department of Health and our epidemiologists on a regular basis to ensure that, you know, that we are still following our necessary guidelines. So, thank you for that comment, and we certainly will continue to do that. One other piece of data, and I'm sorry, I'm taking another minute, is, as Jenny mentioned, the Cass County data. I just received that currently for our Clay County residents currently in ICU, there is two individuals in ICU at this time. There are nine individuals hospitalized. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Anything further?
You know, thank you for asking, but I better quit.
I knew I took a chance with that comment, but, okay. All right, hey, thank you for the good report there, Kathy. It's really been helpful to keep us updated on that.
Sure, you're welcome. Thanks for letting me present the information.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll go to the next item. Consideration of infrastructure purchase due to COVID-19. Because of COVID-19, we've had to make some changes here. Steve is going to go over that with us, what he has come up with. And I think the CARES Act, people have been working on this too, haven't they?
Yes, we have discussed this piece extensively, and I might maybe pitch off a little bit before Steve goes into it. We, as a CARES committee, have been working since July, I think, by two to three times a week to address COVID needs in the community and how Clay County specifically can move forward living among a pandemic. And part of that is that we were in meetings with the Association of Minnesota Counties and hearing what other counties were doing. And it became quite clear that the business of county government doesn't stop because there's a pandemic. And so, we quickly realized that we needed to identify a way to address safety of the citizens and the employees in a way that would still allow county government to move forward vibrantly. And so, I think that's probably why this rose to the top. And Steve, you can take it from there.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mojo. Mr. Chair, as you recall, last week, this board approved the county administrator to enter into contract negotiations for infrastructure purchase due to COVID-19 mitigation. Commissioner Mojo has touched on some of the thought processes that have gone through that from the committee's standpoint. And I think, just to reiterate what she said, that from the beginning, this board is really focused on the safety of our employees and our citizens. And you guys have challenged our departments to ensure that we're meeting the ever-changing needs, but also doing so in a safety fashion. This board has supported other ideas, such as moving more services online, building permits, documents for the recorder's office, and management systems that limit the face-to-face interactions of citizens and employees. Social distancing has provided challenges here on campus, as Commissioner Mojo has talked about. Some of our facilities, even through our modifications, haven't been able to meet the standards that we have for health expectations. And this board has taken previous actions on that, looking at our DMV and also how we do county business here in this room. And you made some adjustments based on that. And so, the request before you this morning for your consideration falls under the latter category. We will be looking at a purchase agreement that you have before you and a flyer of a space that's located on 3510 12th Avenue South. It's a building that has roughly 18,851 square feet. Right now, the Right now, the space is currently set up for, in an office format, it's not segmented it up. The benefit to this is areas, it has 28 individual offices, multiple conference spaces, and over 75 cubicles. That could be adjusted to provide an environment that would allow for adequate social distancing and meeting future needs of our citizens and our staff. The areas that we would suggest utilizing this space for would be our auditor treasurer, our planning and zoning, our assessor, our recorder, and our GIS departments, which are commonly known as our land records department. We would also be looking at the human resources and administrative offices moved into these locations. This space would create an opportunity for social distancing for our departments and for our citizens. We see here on our campus the challenges that we face, especially right now, we have a voting going on, we have trials going on. Our recorder's office has had a year that has exceeded all requests to this point. And so this space would provide us an opportunity to spread out and meet those needs, meet the needs of staying open for our citizens. The purchase agreement before you this morning, just a few highlights, has an asking price of $2.2 million with an earnest money request of $10,000. Through the negotiation process, we've negotiated that all furniture, including chairs, conference space, break room equipment, has been negotiated into that price. We would be looking at a potential closing date of November 24th with a transitioning into the building starting in December. Now, the building is roughly nine years old. We had Joel look through that. He was impressed with the condition of the building, it is still rough. The HVAC systems appear to be in excellent condition. Again, I would assume that the board would probably want an inspection done on it, but Joe did not see any issues with the building. The space has adequate parking for both citizens and employees. There would be some fit-up costs that would need to be associated with this purchase. And just to be clear, the fit-up costs are not included in that, in that $2.2 million. The committee has processed or discussed that issue and would be recommending that any fit-up costs would be, would come from our county reserves. And we do not have a figure on that at this point. And so the recommendation has been vetted by the committee. The committee has brought this forward and feels that this will provide space that would adequately provide the room and better allow citizens, the county, to safely meet the needs of our citizens and employees. And it would ensure that county business could continue to adequately social distance during current or future health emergencies or pandemics. And with that, I would yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair, I think there's one other piece that I think is really important to that. With the transition of the departments listed to this building, it will really allow us to address the backlog in court cases that has become a major issue because of the COVID closures. Currently, we are not able to run the courts at the full capacity due to distancing requirements and one courthouse being used for juror deliberation, I believe. And so allowing some rooms to become better used for the jurors and then have the courtrooms be able to move forward with the court cases, it will really address an issue that is a large issue now, but if not addressed, will become a significant one. It's also important to note that the community meeting space that this board has supported and construction going across the hall will continue to be that. It will continue to facilitate the meetings and commissions that we have identified in the past so that, even though administration would be down on 12th Avenue South for the boards and whatnot, they would be up here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase agreement brought forward by the county administrator, which will address COVID-19 infrastructure mitigation.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Jim, second by Grant to approve this agreement. Any further questions?
I guess I have another one, I guess. I think it's important to note that this purchase will be made with CARES Act dollars. We will work on determining what pocket that money will come out of. So 100% of the purchase price will be that. Steve did allude a little bit to fit-up costs, and I think we have a rough idea as to what they would be. The building is in excellent shape and the finishings are as well. But maybe should talk about if we want to have Steve work with an architect to, there will have to be some segmented areas made into, so it's, you know, there's a lobby-type area, and then you can serve a customer from different windows. So I think that's maybe something we should give direction to the administrator as well.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
One question that I just recently thought of for Steve or Brian to maybe to be sure of here. Are there any, because these are federal CARE Act dollars, are there any stipulations on once we use those dollars to purchase infrastructure, are there any stipulations on future abilities as to what to do with that, with those properties? I guess I'm trying to compare it to, for example, when there's been FEMA dollars used to purchase lands, there's strict regulations on not being able to do things with that property in the future. I just want to make sure that that's not the case here. I know it's kind of a late subject to bring up, but I'd just like to make sure of that.
I think that's a very good question.
Well, I think, and Brian may pipe in here too, but I think that my direct answer would be is we probably need to look more detail at that. But I think based on the discussion that we've had and the criteria that we've received from the U.S. Treasury, the requirement or what allows us to utilize the funds in this circumstances are the needs to provide an atmosphere which provides the ability to meet the needs that can't be met in our current location. And so if we had, if we had issues that dealt with the pandemic, that if we needed to utilize that space in a different fashion, my thought process would be is that would come from this determination from this board to ensure that that space would be utilized for, space for the COVID piece. Oh, Brian, if you have any other?
I also think it's important to note that we've worked very closely with the Office of Management and Budget and Association of Minnesota Counties in helping to guide us what is available and isn't available with CARES Act dollars. And I have a two-inch binder full of what those regulations are. And once the president signed the CARES Act, there really were, once the money got to the counties, there was a lot of questions in terms of what were the regulations. First, we heard that they had to be spent by the end of the year, and then, well, maybe it was March, and then maybe it was December 1st. And so there's really been a moving target. And so what I can say is we've done the best with the information that we've been provided along the way and following all of those concerns. This is something that is an asset to the county that I believe, I believe really will be utilized for a long time, but I think that's an important piece that we should, that Kevin has, that we should clarify. You know, I definitely feel that we've followed what the regulations are.
Mr. Chair, I'm not questioning that we're following the regulations. I'm questioning that, you know, part of the discussion that we had on this was that this was, this was going to be a county asset. And I just want to make sure, as we're talking about it as a county asset, that, for example, future boards 10 or 15 or 20 years down the road, if they determine that that facility no longer meets our needs, are there any restrictions on our ability to sell it to others? That's my, that's the simple question that I have. I don't question any other part of it.
All right. Will Mr. Melton give us a little update on that?
I think some answer to that is, no, there are no regulations that say we could never resell that property or reutilize that or something else. I think, just as Commissioner Mojo stated, I mean, this is pretty novel, and the issues that came out with it, I mean, the ability to resell it at some point, or if COVID ultimately, you know, clears itself up, or with a, if we get a cure or whatever else and things change and we're able to redo things, I mean, I think, again, this asset would still be able to be utilized, but if ultimately we need to do something else with it, change the way we used it, or ultimately sell it, there's no regulation currently within there that says we couldn't be able to do that. But I think, as Steve even said, we can dig deeper to make sure there's nothing else we're missing, but there's nothing that I know right now in reading that. I think we would be perfectly fine, both, I know we're perfectly fine, well within our use under the current law to be able to purchase this building, and there is no regulation that says we couldn't, you know, sell this at a later point.
Okay. Thank you. All right, as I said before, we have a motion by Jim, second by Grant. Roll call.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay. So we'll proceed with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now we'll go to CARES Act committee update. Mr. Larson and Mr. Brooke, Darren Brooks is going to help us up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again. Darren, if you, do you have anything that you would like to start off with this?
Couple things to give you an update on where we are. All of the congregate and long-term care affidavits have been received, and the info will be sent to the auditor treasurer for payment to those individuals or in departments. To kind of piggyback, and this isn't necessarily COVID-related, but, or CARES Act-related, but we have seen an uptick in employees that are either coming up positive or in contact and being quarantined for COVID reasons. Right now, we're tracking probably over 20 people that are currently out. So just to reiterate, we did have a PIC meeting a couple weeks ago, I believe, to discuss some of the things. And I think what we did come to the conclusion was that, you know, a lot of people are getting this from contacts outside of work. And I've been over in the family service center and I've seen, you know, everybody wearing masks and everything like that. So we do, we are seeing that in the workforce as well, and uptick in the quarantines and positive cases. For phase two of the CARES Act, we had, we have 19, I'm sorry, nine of 16 affidavits in already. They have until Friday to turn those in. And I know Mark Sloan has been working on those to contact those people and get those in before the Friday date. So, and then for the long-term care, we had a total of 21 that applied. There was 25 actual, three declined, one went out of business. So we had a total of 21, which came to $445,000 spent on the long-term care and congregating long-term care facilities. So that's really all I have right now at this point. I did not hand out a chart like I normally do due to the fact of the motion that was made today on the new purchase. So the CARES Act committee is going to get together next week to kind of discuss where those funds should be in this chart, and then I'll update that chart for tomorrow's, or not tomorrow's, next Tuesday's board meeting.
Thank you, Darren. And I think Darren brings up a good point. I think with our purchase today, we're, we would nearly exhaust the funds that we received as part of the CARES Act. And I think it'd be beneficial just to kind of, just to do a, just a real quick recap on some of the real positive things that we've done here on the county level. Again, if you recall, we broke, we broke our funding into six categories. Clay County received $7,843,443. In our small business category, we did two rounds of small business relief, first with businesses from 1 to 19 employees, our full-time equivalents, and also 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(19)'s. We also did a second round of 50 to, excuse me, 20 to 50 employees, providing over $1 million of relief to our, to our businesses here in Clay County. As Darren mentioned, we also made funding available through our long-term care and group homes, initially of right around $550,000. In our community resiliency, we've reached out to our partners here in the community to provide services for mental health within the community, within our schools. And also, we've provided funding mechanisms for our seniors and also for our veterans. Our public health and outreach has provided, received funding to make sure that they had the adequate dollars to meet the needs of the pandemic. I think originally, we had planned for a mass vaccination. Unfortunately, we've not got to that point yet, and so that, that funding was, has been adjusted into different areas. We had county infrastructure challenges. We, this board approved remote work, infrastructure to ensure that businesses can continue as close to usual during a pandemic. We expended funds, DMV location, to better serve the needs of our citizens, an area that's been, been an issue with our citizens for a period of time. And so that was a great solution. And again, also our multipurpose community space to better meet the space needs for participation of our citizens and also technology needs for, so when we're not able to participate, that we can better meet those needs. We also received funding allocations for our small communities of townships and cities under 200, and we've worked with them through this process to allocate funds available to them to meet their needs of COVID. And again, we also had our reimbursements that, to the county, just for some of the costs that we've had. And so overall, I think as we, as we start to wrap down here on our funding, our committee will continue to meet. But I think in just that quick review, I think what we've done as a committee and brought to this board, and this board has worked to utilize that money in the best ways that they can to bring the most impact to the citizens of our Clay, citizens of Clay County. And so I just, just wanted to provide that brief update.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, I just really want to thank the folks that have been working really hard on this. Steve, and Darren, and Brian, and Lori, and Kathy, and Gabe, and Commissioner Campbell and I, we, and Mark Sloan, I apologize. You guys have really worked hard. And we've spent hours in meetings, but the prep work that you've done behind the scenes is significantly more than that, and that doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you. You know, I really truly feel that the CARES Act created an opportunity for local, local entities to dictate how to deal with the pandemic in their backyards. And I truly feel that we are better suited, no matter what happens going forward. I hope that this pandemic doesn't last as long as it has doubled that, but there it may. And the PPE that we have in place, the extra barriers for employees and touch-free fixtures, I truly feel that we've done the most that we could with the money to keep citizens safe and help control the spread of the virus. So thank you for all the work that you've done. We could not have done that without your heavy lifts.
You appreciate the kind words, and it really has been a great team from the leadership of this board of providing what the expectations are to our committee, working on a daily basis. The commissioners have been, have been great, and we're fortunate to have such a great team. such a great team.
Yes. Great work in all that. Any further thing on that? We're done? Okay, with that, we'll go on to contract with JT Lawn Services and Landscaping for snow services for this winter, or for the next three years, I think it is.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. It's a three-year contract. It's passed, passed board meeting. The, the maintenance team brought forward two contracts of JT's Lawn Service and Landscaping and Bumguard Services LLC, looking at, looking at our services for the next two year, or three years. They requested to take back the, the two proposals to, to look at which one was the best. And Joe is bringing forward that JT's Lawn Service and Landscaping would be the one that he would recommend providing the bid to after, after looking through all the equipment and, and hourly costs.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve the request and award JT Lawn Services and Landscaping the contract.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant, to award Lawn Services to JT Lawn?
I do have one question. We've talked in the CARES Act Committee, the new space that, DMV, I believe, snow removal is covered under the lease agreement of that space. But we did identify that it may make sense to have a contract for snow and/or lawn service at this new site that we talked about today. Not that that would be included in this. I, specifically if we would move in staff this year, yeah, we may need to address that.
I will, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, I'll work with, with Joe on that and add some discussions and then explore potential opportunities for, to have that service done.
Okay, we've got a motion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we, the request approval, or is Dave going to be here without, are you thinking that, or?
I think, I think Dave was going to come, but maybe we're waiting for Dave.
Oh, okay.
The agenda addition here.
We got an addition here, the request to fill a vacated detox nurse position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had an unexpected loss of an employee in the past week. Our condolences go to, to their family. And the request that we would have this morning was a full-time position in our, in our overnight detox position. The budget, the position is request, is budgeted, and we would request to, to fill that position.
I'll move out further request. Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the request to hire one full-time nurse position. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Okay, I see Dave is here now. We're going to discuss the purchase of a Boss snowplow from Minnesota State bid?
Yeah, this past spring, we got a different vehicle for a maintenance foreman. The previous vehicle that he had was handed down to our road foreman, and that pickup did have a snowplow. Initially, we weren't sure if we were going to purchase one for the new vehicle. With winter coming, I think he's really having reservations. He's missing it. So I did talk to Lori, and we'd, we'd use our roadway maintenance funds if we got some additional funding left over, that we would utilize that. It's a state bid item purchased locally from Bird's Truck and Equipment. The cost on it is $6,231. Would go into the Internal Service Fund for future replacement on five-year schedule. And it would be able to, it's a half-ton model, and the next pickup that we would get would be half-ton, and our plan would be to carry it over from the, into the next unit anyway. So probably wouldn't have to be replaced in three to five years. But anyway, it will be on the schedule, and we're planning is to reuse it on multiple vehicles in the future.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, to approve the purchase of a Boss snowplow for the maintenance supervisor vehicle. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Aye.
Mr. Mojo.
Aye.
Mr. Gross.
Aye. Okay, with that, thank you, Dave.
Yep, thank you.
With that, we'll go to committee reports.
I'm sorry, if you're here, I apologize. I know that the snow, you and I have talked a lot on some of the construction projects. Could you just give an update, a little bit on how the snow and cold may have affected that project, so?
Right. So Commissioner Mojo is referring to our county audit. It was a full-depth reclamation project that I think at this board, and multiple times I had told you that, you know, we're going to be done before beet harvest. It was supposed to be a real simple job. What we did is we took off two inches of existing asphalt. There was a couple areas that we, well, several areas that we were fixing, you know, throughout the last several years. But the area that we encountered in the, kind of the eastern mile, mile and a half, there was extremely a lot of unsuitable wet material from previous roadway constructions. Back in the day, the counties would take the ditch material, put it up on top and build the roadway with it. We're talking 40, 50, 60 years ago or more. And that poor black material doesn't hold up very well. Like I said, there was some areas that were showing distress. We were fixing it and patching it, and this time of year, it seemed like was the worst, and it's, it's hard to fix things this time of year. So we decided to do a full-depth project. We did some borings out there. There's, there was a fair amount of gravel and asphalt, enough where we could grind that existing material, leave it in place, and then put six inches of new material on top of it. As we ground up the existing material, like I said, that east mile or so, about 8,000 feet, it was just unworkable. Our first try was we dug about a three-foot trench and put the existing millings in there, because the outer wheel track on the eastbound lane wasn't holding up. And all that basically did was it sucked water in, because now we replace stuff, put a wrap in there, and it just brought, brought more water into the road. We, our next try was we tried to dig out French drains, about every 100 feet in the 7,000 feet, we dug out French drains. So we, we dug another three-foot area out perpendicular to the roadway into the ditch, and we put sand and gravel and fabric and rock in there, and we tried to get the water out of there, and it just didn't have enough time. So our, our last option was to remove and replace roughly over two feet of material on a 12-foot lane, about 8,000 feet. So we have 7,000 feet on the eastbound lane and about 1,000 feet or so on the westbound lane. So there's some areas that, there's, and we did get as much paved as we could. I think maybe 80%, 85% or so is paved. But there's some areas where there's paving on one side and gravel on the other, and there's some areas where there's no paving, there's gravel from grass line to grass line. While we were doing that dig out, it took a little while to get things lined up. Contractor had to get trucks, they had to find material, because this is a change order, it was above and beyond the normal scope. Took longer than we wanted to get the material actually even just started. When, of course, the, the very first day they started was October 1st, which is kind of the, the typical starting for sugar beet campaign. But in the, in the meantime, all the paving that this contractor was doing in our county was, got complete. So they, they did a six and a half mile job north of Holly. That work was done. The plant had to get picked up and moved to their next job, which is up by Thief River Falls. And I've been reaching out to them the last couple of days, and they're still working on that job. And I told them, you know, we really would like to see what the, you know, next week's supposed to be pretty nice, the rest of this week's supposed to be pretty nice. We're pushing them, trying to get them to come back, and maybe at a minimum, even just get asphalt on a base layer on everything. So essentially, what we have out there is we've got, like, all the lifts except for the very top lift on the stuff that could handle the paving. And then our plan would be is if we could get the rest of the base course on there, and then maybe they could come back next year and put the wear course on the entire job. So we're pushing for that. I hopefully hear back from them today. He said he'd reach out to me today and let me know how it's going. If they can get their work done at Thief River Falls, hopefully they can mobilize that plant towards the end of the week. And I think we really only need about three days, maybe we can get this thing wrapped up.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think for the public to understand what's going on, it's important. And I, I also think that we were lucky that we didn't have an accident because of the beet trucks that, that were on that road and the coordination with hauling the material out. If we could at least get both lanes even.
Right, it's gonna be a long winter and spring.
It will be a very long winter, a dangerous winter, if we don't have that.
Yeah, the cooperation out there during the harvest was unbelievable. All the people that typically live around there and use that road, they were very cooperative and very understanding. You know, in dealing with Commissioner Mojo, I made a few phone calls, and the people that I spoke to are extremely understanding. It was very nice. And thank God, we didn't have any type of situation out there.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? All right, we're going committee reports. Jenny, you want to start us out today?
Yes. On Tuesday last week, I attended the virtual aspect of the rural counties, rural cities meeting, and heard a lot of very encouraging reports from the various communities and the positive growth that they're experiencing in Clay County, and that's my report.
Okay. Jenny, you want to take it now?
Thank you. Last week, I also called in virtually to the Small Cities Committee. That, that continues to be such an important meeting to hear what's going on in each individual city, and I appreciate the, the participation with all of those that call into that. I, I think there's been some concerns, concerns raised on some mutual areas, maybe dispatch. I think we're working on that, and the committee's working on that. But thank you to those for attending that. I also attended the CARES Act Committee meeting on Wednesday. We talked about the property that we addressed earlier today, and talked about the potential of what the, the spending categories will be once all said and done. I believe we signed the Moorhead Center Mall lease, so we're, that is final, and we'll get, what's the, the 12th, is that?
16th is when we'll officially move in.
November 16th, we'll be open for business. That is really exciting. Then we talked more in the U.S. Treasury documents. I attended the Lakes and Currys Community Action Meeting. They are continuing to do good work during the pandemic. There are some housing dollars that they're working on addressing needs areas. That's a CARES Act grant that they did receive. Good work there. And then we talked about the commodity boxes to the seniors in Clay County that is made possible because of the CARES Act designation. And then had another CARES Act Committee meeting yesterday. Talked more about the same things that I have addressed, the round two updates, and then dollars that may be, there's a small pot of money that's still remaining, but we do have a couple outliers that we've identified as needs areas. And the township dollars, working with the townships to spend the dollars that they've been allocated, if not rolling them back to the county so that the dollars stay in Clay County. And then yesterday, I had a Lakeland Mental Health Center meeting. We had updates. The collaboratives did not meet, but the reports for the centers, the access indicators and performance indicators looked good. Because of knowing that the pandemic was happening, they were able to address, address some needs areas, and so the margins looked really good on the documents. And I will say that the, the needs in the community are really great right now because of mental health crisis, and Lakeland is meeting that need specifically. And the Children's Day Treatment Center areas, the kids are able to call in virtually and receive those treatments. And we talked a little bit, as we have, about staff and positivity rates, and how do you control outbreaks within your agency. And they've done a really good job of that. And I think that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, did you want to give your report today?
Yeah, the only, the only one, meeting I was able to attend this week was the, yesterday CARES meeting, and Commissioner Mojo gave a report on that, and I really have nothing more to add. That's it.
Okay. Grant?
Let's see, I had, I had a CARES meeting act, and that's been discussed from last week. And then I, I attended the Small Cities Meeting, and, and Jim's accurate there. There were a lot of good reports from the communities out in the county, and all the positive things they've got going, so it was good news. I had a solid waste meeting yesterday, and everything is going very well with the project out at the landfill, and probably go out there at our next meeting and take a look and see how things are going. But everything is, is moving ahead of schedule and doing well. And then we're going to start the planning process for the, the, the new transfer station that we received bonding money for. And so that will be coming up this spring. And then, let's see, I had a diversion authority meeting, and it was announced, I know in the media this, last night and this morning, that there's been a, an agreement between all the parties in terms of litigation that has been going on, which is a very positive thing. And so as of now, the diversion project should move forward and be done in a timely manner. That was it for me.
Mr. Chair, if I may comment on that. I just have been very critical of the diversion authority and lack of outreach to some of those concerned citizens. And I want to commend Commissioner Whalen and Campbell for seeing the need there to reach out and, and try to see others, other perspectives in terms of how the effects will be to others. So I just, I'm thankful that these discussions happened. I wish they could have happened a lot earlier, but I think it's an important step.
Yes. There's the thing, that agreement is signed, I think is a big step for Clay County, and for Cass County. My means I was highway tracking last Tuesday. In fact, the first thing we discussed was the diversion funding request for County State 8 Highway 2 from Comstock to the Red River. I don't know if that's going to change, if that was included in the deal that they signed. So we'll have to find out once we get this.
I talked to our highway engineer yesterday, and he alluded to the fact that it was included.
Okay, there's good news there. Okay. County State 8 Highway 1, we still got a problem with trying to get some property so we can move forward with that, to get Eastmans to get on that property. So that was a project we were going to do this year, but we moved it into 2021 now. There's some bridge funding that they received, so a lot of the bridges have been completed. I think there's about 10, 12, 12 bridges, I think we were going to do. They've all been completed this year. Talked about the conference that was, that Dave and Justin go to, that was canceled, but American Airlines is going to honor the airline tickets that they purchased, and it's good till 2021. Then we have construction updates on the Linden Avenue Park, Park Avenue project. There's a turning lane there that we're trying to get corrected, and we got some funding for that. Talked quite a bit about gravel tax, how it's distributed amongst the small cities and townships. That was for highway tracking. Then a small cities that people have talked about already. I'm glad to see there's, I think we had one, four, four cities there this time. Would have liked to have seen more, but they all gave good reports. They're all, excuse me, they're all reporting that their developments are going good. So that was all good news, that there's projects going on in the county. We got some good reports on Township Road Maintenance, some Dave over, Kirk Roselberger gave an update on the new facility that's going to be built up there on the north side of Moorhead. And I think that's starting next spring, I think you mentioned, yeah. There, last Wednesday, I had Historical Society. Mostly routine stuff there, but they are updating the ship gallery. Got a grant for that for around $20,000. They're looking at doing rural artistic tree school, trying to update that thing, doing some work with the Comstock trees. They had to dig some trees down from the Comstock house. And then we went over the handbook and the emergency plan for the Historical Society. And that was my meeting, I guess. I'm just going to make a comment to look over your schedule. I think Friday, we've got AMC meeting at 9 o'clock. I think you've got structures. got AMC meeting at nine o'clock. I think you've got instructions on how to get on there virtually. And I know there's also some listed on Thanksgiving Day. We're taking off, but I didn't see the invites to your house there. You didn't give it.
Due to social distancing, there will be none. Frank, due to social distancing, there will be none.
Oh, I see. Okay. Very good. And we'll skip that this year.
Next, next year, Mr. Chair. Just my, my meetings this week, many have been touched down. Participated in the highway tracking meeting last Tuesday. That's been addressed. The Rural Cities meeting, again, we want to thank, thank our rural cities for, for continuing to participate in that. Had a lot of good discussions. I will be looking to meet again in March or April of 2021, probably at the same location. We have had two coronavirus or CARES meetings last week that, that have been addressed. On the 21st, I met with local regional administrators here in the Fargo-Moore area, talking about COVID CARES and the Regional Dispatch Center. On the 22nd, we had county management. We talked about the Minnesota testing site that Kathy spoke on earlier. We talked about our Rural Cities meeting. Appreciate our staff's participation in that. We had a CARES update. And again, we talked about our, our employees and, and remote work and alternate days and, and looking to work evenings and weekends if that fits the need during COVID. Tomorrow, our management group is going to be meeting with MCIT virtually. We're going to be going over the 10 essential risk managements and, and also going through our insurance categories and schedules to ensure that we have everything on there. We have asked MCIT once, once, once the pandemic has subsided, to come out with our new buildings and take a look firsthand, just to ensure that, that we have, have everything that we need on our, on our schedules. Participated in the solid waste, the meeting that Commissioner Whalen has, has talked about. Kirk and his staff are doing a wonderful job. I think they have about three projects, they will have three projects going on at, at one time. And so, so that, they have a lot of great things happening out there. So that concludes my report.
Okay, anything else?
One other thing. I know you're tired of hearing me speak. But I also want to note that on Saturday, the courthouse will be open for voting. Believe the hours are 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., so that's available. And also thanks to the staff that have helped to facilitate that. It's, it's really been something to see the amount of people that are able to vote early. So that is available.
Okay. All right. Other than that, get your United Way campaign things in if you have one to fill out. Okay, got to be in by Thursday, I think. Okay. We're adjourned.